Well, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation they'd asked to be read at the council meeting. Whereas the March of Dimes Foundation is a pioneer in improving the health of infants and women of childbearing age by preventing birth defects, premature birth, and infant mortality, and whereas the March of Dimes was founded by President Franklin D. Roosevelt in 1938 to fight polio and funded the development of two vaccines still in use today that virtually eliminated the crippling disease. Whereas the March of Dimes in 1958, having achieved its initial mission, shifted its attention from polio to the prevention of birth defects and through federal and state advocacy led the way in establishing a nationwide network of birth defects monitoring programs and research centers. And whereas the March of Dimes was a pioneer in the support of newborn screening, urging Congress to pass and fund the Newborn Screening Saved Lives Act, which in 2008 established national guidelines on the conditions states should include in newborn programs and through state advocacy ensuring that every state screens all newborns for that core set of conditions. And whereas the March of Dimes is a longtime advocate for the access of healthcare for women of childbearing age, infants, children, and families, ensuring that they have access to private and public health coverage under -- private coverage, the state's Child Health Insurance Program, Medicaid Title V Block Grant, and the Affordable Care Act. And whereas the March of Dimes in 2003 launched the Prematurity Campaign to address the crisis of premature birth and help families have full-term healthy babies and authored the Premature Research Expansion and Education Act for mothers, which Congress enacted in 2006 and reauthorized in 2013 to expand research, education, and services to fight premature births. And whereas 16,016 babies are born premature in the state of Illinois, and the March of Dimes in Illinois has worked extensively to promote tobacco-related policies that help to reduce premature birth and promote healthy equity. And whereas the March of Dimes in Illinois looks forward to partnering with Mayor Coos and the Town of Normal, Illinois in response to the continued crisis of premature birth. And whereas the month of November is recognized as World Prematurity Awareness Month to bring about recognition of this global health crisis, and November 17th is recommended -- recognized as Prematurity Awareness Day across the United States. Now therefore, I, Chris Coos, is the mayor of Town of Normal, do hereby proclaim November 17th, 2016, as Prematurity Awareness Day and urge all citizens to celebrate the day in the same manner. Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
Please call and roll.
Mayor Coos.
Here.
Mr. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McBride.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Gaines is not here.
We'll begin with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item to be addressed tonight is the Omnibus Agenda, and these are items that are considered brutes in nature and will be handled by one vote unless, excuse me, unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. I would like to be excused on voting on any bills I may have incurred in my duties as Mr. Fritz.
Item H, and I'd ask to be excused on -- from voting on any items, expenses I may have incurred in my duties as councilperson.
Mr. McBride.
Got it.
You got it, huh? All right. Let's see.
Items considered on the Omnibus Agenda tonight are approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 17th, 2016, and approval of Town of Normal expenditures for payment as of November 2nd, 2016, a resolution urging Illinois state leaders to release downstate operating assistance grants for public transportation services, a resolution extending a license agreement with Peoria Charter Coach Company for access to Uptown Station as a transportation provider, a resolution authorizing the execution of an employment agreement with CIRBN LLC, ordinance authorizing the sale of town property located at 509 North School Street to Roger Jagi? Jig? Any help on that one?
You got it.
Okay. For the sum of $65,000. Ordinance rezoning property in the Town of Normal at 402 North Main Street. Please call and roll.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mayor Coos.
Aye. Item H on the Omnibus Agenda is an ordinance amending Division 5 of Chapter 17 of the Town or Normal Municipal Code having to do with noise violations. Mr. Fritz.
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Fritz.
A couple of questions. One, treats every day of the week the same, and I don't know where -- how we determine the times, maybe we did some research on other communities and things like we typically do, and just curious if that's kind of what we found out there and if any thought was given to maybe treating weekend days differently than weekdays. And then enforcing the ordinances. It reads like something that'll be enforced on complaint, on a complaint basis really. I mean, we're not obviously going to go around looking for people who are violating the noise ordinance unless we happen to stumble into somebody, but just some clarifications in those areas, please.
Sure. Let me take a stab and then I'll get -- ask Mr. Day to help me out. In terms of the time parameters, 9:30 PM to 7:00 AM, that's somewhat arbitrary, but we did look at other noise ordinances, and frankly, there's quite a bit of variation from community to community. There are some that are significantly earlier than that, require discontinuation of this type of noise as early as 7 o'clock in the evening, probably some a little bit later, but we felt 9:30 was kind of a reasonable, happy medium. And again, 7:00 AM, anywhere from 6:30 to 7:00 AM is a pretty typical morning time in those ordinances. We certainly could have considered weekends, but from an enforcement perspective, it's always better to be consistent throughout the week, all seven days, it's the same rule. And frankly, again, this really addresses individuals and their ability to have a restful night's sleep, and, you know, I think 9:30 to 7:00 from staff's perspective is reasonable, Saturday and Sunday as well as during the work week, but it's certainly an option if the council's so inclined to make a special exception for weekends, that's certainly something that you can do. Enforcement, as you mentioned, it will be our intent to enforce on a complaint basis. This is the type of thing where we'll certainly notify a perpetrator first, give them an opportunity to abate the situation. If that doesn't work, then we'll have to look at issuing an ordinance violation, but that would not be our first contact, would be more just education and trying to get voluntary compliance.
That was another question I had, is how we would alert people. I mean, individuals, obviously, are doing a lot of this work, all of us caring for yards and whatever, run into that personally, but some contractors, especially landscape, coming in doing maybe an application or something like that, I've experienced this myself and just went and talked to the application, the applicator myself, you know, and just suggested that maybe it was a little early to be making that, you know, that application. Of course, they were just following their orders, but I didn't know if we were going to proactively contact some -- certain types of companies, because there are some that are in and out in 15 to 20 minutes.
Right.
Making an application to a lawn or that type of thing, and if I, you know, if somebody were to complain, if I would have called somebody to complain, they're gone, you know, and of course, if I identified the company, you could always contact the company later, but I just wondered how we were going to get the word out that this is the new regulation in town.
Yeah, I don't know that -- it's a good point. We certainly rely on local media to get this information out to the community. Likely, if we find that we're, you know, getting calls about repeated offenders, companies that are providing lawn care services, we'll certainly notify them directly and say, hey, you're on notice that, you know, you violated the ordinance and advise them not to do that. If that continues, then we'll have to take more aggressive enforcement action, but it may be a good idea that some of those companies that we know are doing business, we could certainly notify them in the form of a letter, just so, with a copy of the ordinance, just so, you know, they are, we reach out to them proactively, and we don't rely on them getting this from the media. It's a good suggestion. We hadn't planned on it, but that's probably something we should do.
Thank you.
Mr. McBride.
I realize this does not, this does not apply with this ordinance change, nor should it, nor could it, but I thought since we're talking about noise, it might be a good opportunity to ask staff where we stand with Quiet Zone designation applications, so maybe we're not quite so impacted in the future by all these train whistles. Sure, Mr. McBride, you're referring to train noise, specifically train whistles, and as the amount of traffic on our local rail line owned by Union Pacific that runs right behind this building gets greater with both freight and passenger rail traffic, we are, have seen a much bigger problem of train whistle noise, particularly late at night, early in the morning, and there's, there are very few ways of addressing that. One of them, however, is to apply for and receive approval of a Quiet Zone designation, and there are many communities across the country that have been successful in getting their community designated as a train quiet zone, meaning that the trains are not required, in fact, not even permitted to blow their whistles. It typically can be an expensive process because municipalities then have to invest in special safety equipment on all crossings, that is, that cost is usually borne by the municipality and can be hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, depending on the number of crossings. We are fortunate because much of that equipment is being installed as we speak as part of the High Speed Rail Initiative that's taking place, and so we do believe that once that equipment installation has been finished, which is probably at this point going to be next spring, we will be in a good position to seek designation of Normal as a quiet zone. And we will, we will then make that application once we have all the safety equipment in place, and we, based upon our conversations with the Federal Railroad Administration, which administers that program, we believe that we've got a good chance of getting that designation. So hopefully sometime next summer, late spring, early summer, we will apply, and I'm not sure how long it takes for the application to be processed and a decision made, but I would guess it would be probably 60 to 90 days.
Thank you. Further on this item? Please call and roll.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mayor Coos.
Aye. The ordinance is approved. There is no general orders tonight, but we have one item of new business, and that's a presentation of the Town of Normal 2040 Vision Plan, and making that presentation's going to be Christina Schulz and Dante Latson, is my understanding, so welcome.
And others, I think.
Yeah. I don't ever think I've seen this full.
I know.
This is new ground. Good.
Put a committee together.
Yep.
All right. We are honored to be here tonight before the Normal Town Council and want to first thank you all for allowing us an opportunity to provide a brief overview of our process and progress to date. On behalf of the Town of Normal Vision 2040 Work Group, I want to give a special thanks to Mayor Coos and Manager Peterson and their entire staff for allowing us to take part in developing a vision and the corresponding core values for the town that we all love and call home. I met with Mayor Coos several months ago at the Coffee House in Delhi, which is one of my community's satellite offices. It was very clear that he wanted this process to be unique and for us to push the limits of what everyone defined as normal. Shortly afterwards, enduring our first meeting as a work group, City Manager Peterson gave us the charge to aspire for greatness. When we started, it became apparent that we could not handle business as usual, that we would have to be unafraid to push the limits and to have tough conversations. I mean, no pressure at all, right? Keep in mind that our work will play an important role in determining whether we are able to successfully recruit and retain talented people in our community. Therefore, essentially, our group had to be what we affectionately refer to as radically normal. I believe we have accomplished this objective and hope that the council is pleased with the outcome. The vision for 2040 is we have a place for you in our vibrant, prosperous, and connected community. We aspire to go above and beyond in the following ways.
We're going to get the slides? Okay.
All right, we're getting there. Okay.
Engagement. Ours is a resourceful and collaborative community that fuels civic engagement and inspires meaningful and generous contributions from residents of all walks of life. Economy. Ours is an innovative and diverse economy in 2040 that has grown from what it was in
Spaces. Ours is an interrelated community visible through safe and accessible spaces that people love. Social equity. Ours is a compassionate community that strives for social consciousness, responsiveness, and justice.
Multiculturalism. Ours is an inclusive and welcoming community that celebrates our unique and diverse backgrounds, identities, cultures, and talents. Lifelong learning. Ours is an engaged and inquisitive community that encourages growth and supports lifelong learning.
Creativity. Ours is a creative community that promotes art and artists as an essential infrastructure that values art as a powerful process for bringing people and ideas together. Well-being. Ours is an equitable health and wellness system, ensuring the healthy choice is the easy choice.
Before we proceed, we'd just like to check with the council to see if there are any initial reactions or questions.
Okay.
I'd like to continue with a brief description of the process that we used to create this vision and these core values. Ours was a collaborative process. We met once monthly for two hours between April and October, with some interim work in between, to support reaching into our networks for benchmarking information and for drafting. Our work reflects a balanced approach that includes careful, considerate listening to one another's current and past experiences in the community, hopes and needs for the future, alongside data provided by McLean County Regional Planning Commission's Community Snapshot and Existing Conditions Report. Each individual stood out in this process while we also built awareness of demographics, economic, educational, planning, and quality of life trends, stats, and themes.
Our group consisted of lifelong residents, people new to the area, folks that are well into their careers, as well as those that are just getting started in their careers. We had a high school student, people representing multiple racial and ethnic backgrounds, and even a group member that has lived in various countries around the world. While we had a diverse group of participants representing various business sectors and walks of life, it was virtually impossible to include everyone, given some of the limitations such as time. Therefore, as a committee, we think that it is responsible for us to note some of the gaps, and some of those gaps include lower income, unemployed, underemployed, and traditionally underrepresented community groups. The plan is to have a Phase Two of this process that will determine how we can best include these groups in the development of the comprehensive plan.
We'd also like to bring some of the voices of our committee members into this handoff to help reinforce how meaningful this process has been and will be in future. First, I'd like to share a handful of duly-noted gathered from our last working meeting. One of the hardest pieces of planning is seeing beyond the way things are. We saw some better paths toward the future. We took the time to talk about some serious stuff. I appreciate it. I hope I contributed as much as I learned. We struggled with awkward and tough conversations respectfully with humor. It's a start. Our committee represents the talent that the whole community has. That's a very powerful thing to leverage. Our community values that. It bodes well. I'm proud of and grateful for this group. Help implement these ideas that we helped to create. Next, we'd like to ask some of the committee members sitting here with us tonight to provide some of their thoughts as some additional sort of testimonials.
We tried to push ourselves to make sure that we were being courageous enough in our vision. It's hard to see around the next corner. We continually tried to push ourselves. We went out and interviewed children. Everyone on the committee went and interviewed children and asked, what do you see in the future? They had some wonderful insights, also flying horses and holograms, things that, of course, we hadn't thought about. We talked to people in our community who don't have access to healthcare and asked them, what are, what are you doing? How do you take care of yourself? It was easy for us, in this beautiful setting, to become mesmerized by the Town of Normal successes. Those are so obvious, we looked out and could see the circle, and we could see Uptown and all the many things that we're doing right, but we really tried to push ourselves beyond the obvious successes and look at neighborhoods that don't have an area in the neighborhood that we're proud of, that they're proud of. We want in 2040 to see every neighborhood having a space, an area that they're proud of, that they go to, and we certainly want everyone in our community to be able to stroll uptown, to feel comfortable, to feel like they're, they're part of this community, that they belong here.
As, as we worked through the several months of our meetings, it became obvious to achieve this 20 Vision Committee, this 20 Vision goal, is that we need to engage in those uncomfortable and those awkward conversations. There were many of them, but really, as those would wrap up, that's where the growth came from, that's where the ideas came from. So to continue to progress towards this goal, we have to continue to be awkward in our conversations and with a purpose.
Thank you.
I agree with the before-mentioned comments regarding the committee, but I'd also like to say that it has been a great learning experience for me to be able to serve on this committee. It's great to see how much people are committed to the future of this town, to see it flourish. I'm very glad that I can add to its diversity.
We wanted to pause again here in case you had any initial thoughts or reactions. We have a little bit left, but wanted to include you. We're good at participative process over here, so we wanted to give you your shot. Something else that you'll see in the full report included some quick starts, some opportunities to grab, some low-hanging fruit while, and some not-so-low-hanging fruit to get us to 2040. Notice that our quick starts are quick to start but not necessarily finish, and we were clear about that. We, that was part of our boldness, that we were encouraged to provide you with. A couple that I would point out tonight includes one around Core Value 1 engagements. Members of this Vision 2040 Committee unanimously are up for continuing with this process. They want to stay engaged, and so please know you can count on our continued engagements. We're excited about that. We also have a quick start around the Core Value 8 of well-being. We would encourage Town of Normal to benchmark with other places investigating becoming a blue zone. We think that this is a particularly strong place for engaging some of the folks who otherwise aren't included in processes like these, activate and engage the strong middle of our community, our community, as well as underrepresented groups that Dante referenced earlier. We also, as Karen mentioned, have strengths in this town and community that we want you to continue leveraging, and that's also mentioned in our report in one of the appendices. Some of those include the forward-thinking and effective municipal leadership of this town, the strong sense of community that we all have here, the focus on planning and smart growth. Karen mentioned the Uptown Normal itself, the quality of life here, and the high value on building and protecting Normal as a quality place. We know that what comes next is the comprehensive plan, and we are very happy and excited to see that come next. As Dante mentioned, it's a wonderful opportunity to bring more people into this process, and we started this whole presentation with saying, we have a place for you, and this place is always becoming better because of the variety of yous who feel included in this vision, so let's please get to it.
Once again, we would like to thank Mayor Coos and City Manager Peterson for their bold and fearless, yet thoughtful and progressive leadership, as well as the Town Council for allowing us an opportunity to be a part of this process and sharing it with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on to questions, I think it'd be helpful if you could introduce the, your committee members that are here tonight. It helps people understand who was involved in this process.
Sure. We've got Joe Cleary, Nick Moran, Dave Shields, Donnie Chang, Karen Stowe. Some of our committee members are in the audience.
Sure.
Raise your hand.
Can we, yeah, get your stand-ups if you're on the committee?
Please stand up if you're a committee member. Stand up, thank you.
Don't be bashful.
Really glad to see you guys.
Yeah.
And some of the children interviewed are also here.
And her very own Kevin McCarthy.
That's right.
Yeah.
He walked out unscathed.
Yeah. I also see that Mercy Davison and Vasu Penemaraju are also here, and they provided just incredible resources and support to our work, so very helpful.
Well, as always, you know, the mayor's prior and myself have taken a hands-off approach on these visioning committees because it's really important to hear what the citizens read, the engaged citizens of this community think, and so we kind of give it wide latitude, and this is probably our fifth or sixth effort, and they just keep getting better. It's, it's amazing the work that you do, and I understand it was a hard, hard times at times. Things weren't going smoothly, smooth, but usually you have to have some conflict to get to great, great solutions, and I think you've done that. We don't, we don't take these plans lightly either. This is not something that goes on the shelf. This, this becomes part of our community planning process. It will go into the community comprehensive plan, Town and Normal Comprehensive Plan, but it will also stand as its own, as a document that influences decisions as we go forward. So, thank you very much for your very hard work. Anyone else? Kathleen?
I'll just, again, echo a great appreciation for all your hard work and working through maybe some difficult times, and I had the opportunity to go back and read some of the previous reports of this type of exercise, so maybe perhaps in another 10 or 15 or 20 years, somebody else like me might be sitting here and reading this. So again, to echo what the mayor said, that these are not just going to, you know, be put on a shelf. And the one thing that was very striking to me is I did reread some of the previous reports, is how incredibly close and accurate the visioning process has become to what is now real, so something to look forward to.
That, that gave us some, those are big shoes to fill, to be the next committee in a visioning process, knowing how much you use these plans to set the, set the pathway and the roadmap. It was... It was a big honor to be here. Thank you.
I also liked the artwork that you selected for your committee.
Wasn't that fun?
That's quite nice.
Yeah, wonderful. This is Natalie Wetzel. You can find her things at the pod.
Yes. Very nice.
Mr. McCarthy?
Just one brief remark, as I started reading through this. You know, in 1990, when Mayor Harmon said, we need to do this, and the 2015 Committee was born, and like I said, this is the sixth variation along that theme. It struck me that 25 years is probably almost too far out into the future to look. In 1990, looking forward 25 years seemed to make a little bit of sense, but the pace of things today is so much faster than it was just 25 years ago, when we first started this process. And so, it's almost like, the next time we do this, it ought to be the 2040 2.0, kind of like our Uptown 2.0, as you get closer to that 2040, because things are changing so rapidly. And there are many things in here about communications and making, you know, those resources available in a greater, broader way. And I don't know if you can, you could possibly put it on the shelf, because some of those things are going to happen before you could get it to the shelf, you know, almost. And I think the timing of it has been mentioned with the comprehensive plan. We've not had that association in the past. You know, we don't do comprehensive plans every ten years, you know, and it's time for comprehensive plan update. And so, to have this, setting the stage for that is very appropriate. And I think, too, the other thing to emphasize is that, you know, that it was, it's always been a group of citizens that have worked on these reports, and it wasn't something that the city council or the town administration put together and presented to the citizens. It's something the citizens put together and presented to the town and the administration and the council. And then, to actually implement some of these things, they're going to take that same collaborative effort. It's not something that you go through here and you say, well, the town can do this, and the town can do that, and the town needs to do this. But the town is engaged and involved in a lot of these things, things that can influence these things being realized. And I think it's, again, appropriate that with the comp plan and that type of approach of things, that you'll see these things happen over time, but probably more rapidly than we have in the past.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks again, you guys. This is the second visioning process I've been involved in, and I'm struck by, the mayor said that, how seriously we take these things and appreciate things like quick starts that we can target and start to take some action on, whether it's direct action or things we can influence. But the robustness of the conversations in the room was, was a demonstration of the passion and the seriousness that the people that took part in this process and how strongly they feel about the Town of Normal. And that was sometimes overwhelming to me, just in appreciation of how much everybody brought to the room and how much they care about the Town of Normal. And I don't know if you can hear it in my voice, but that's, it's an amazing thing, really, to see citizens of a community come together multiple times over the course of six, eight-month process and hours of their time, and say some things are pretty hard to say in front of a group of people, but, and then do it in a very respectful manner, always keeping an eye on how we make the Town of Normal better. So, thanks for bringing all that. Thanks to Dante and Christina for helping create that environment in those rooms every time we met. You made a safe place to have difficult conversations, and that in itself is a feat. And then, what also always amazes me about these things, and a lot of kudos to everybody who had a hand, is taking all those conversations and turning it into something as succinct and understandable for us to actually do something with, like this is really, really hard work. And hats off to some talented folks right here at this table for doing that. So, thank you very much.
Just like to make one comment, and I'll pick up on Mr. McCarthy's final comment. This report is loaded with substance in a very efficient 25 pages. I have been involved in every one of the visioning reports, going back to 2015. I'm that old. It is unbelievable to me that you put this high-quality document together in seven meetings. That is amazing. I think back to 2015, I think, took a year and a half, and I wouldn't even dare to count the number of meetings. And most of these processes have taken well over a year. Wow, you guys are efficient, and you worked hard, and it is, is an incredibly high-quality document. And as the mayor said, it will stand on its own. It will be part of the comp plan, but this will stand on its own. It'll be a tremendous guide for this council going forward. We're in the process of putting together a strategic plan for the next 12 to 18 months, and this will be very helpful. So, kudos. Great job.
Well done.
And I'll finish comments with, everything old is new again. I said this to the committee, but when you came up with your core values as a committee, it struck me how uniquely similar they were to the core values that Jesse Phil had when he founded the Town of Normal in 1865. So, you guys were paying attention, and so was he. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That concludes our business. Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there concerns or comments? I will make one. Today, Ameren awarded the Town of Normal a monetary award and acclamation as their choice for the state of Illinois's progressive city, and consider us a model of progressive cities in the state of Illinois. And it's a very flattering award to receive. They looked at many, many cities in their service area in the state of Illinois. And when they started listing off the reasons why they chose us as a progressive committee at, community, it showed that they were paying attention. So, there's a sign out front that you'll be seeing more versions of that throughout the community. They said, we can have as many as we want.
Oh, great.
Awesome.
Yeah. So, congratulations, everyone, on that one. Yes?
Holiday open house in Uptown Normal Saturday. Come on out and enjoy this holiday festivities kickoff and support our retailers.
In a likely balmy, high fifties, low sixties environment.
Right, in an uncharacteristically non-holiday weather.
That's okay.
Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Call a roll?
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Pritson?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
All right, we are adjourned.